Lot of.
I mean, deep down, I don't know. That last minute testimony changes things unless it's actually new testimony. Or new evidence or a new point or a new fact.
There were a couple of new things that came out between the last meeting in regards to the. Property where the garbage is staged.
Right.
And and so that letter referenced some of those things and they did. The P D had more information that Skagit County was looking for in that letter. If it's approvable by the board, I'd like to. Be on the Zoom and have the chance to comment to thank them for looking at those. The further information. You know, to extend, they did extend their time on this decision. And took time to really look through staff items and. I'd like to thank those commissioners for their consideration and hope that we would. Behave the same way.
And I agree, and I think regardless of whatever their final.
Yeah.
Answer is, we should probably send a letter saying, thank you for your consideration, you know, professional.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think today, you know, for public comment. And because it's on the agenda for later and it's closed to public comment. That usually like we don't accept public comment on something that's on the agenda and I don't know how Skagit County does it. So maybe the best thing to do is is to give a thank you from Clickitat County for all your time and consideration that you've given and keep it high level.
Okay.
And fuzzy and warm.
Yep, I agree. So I can do that at eleven thirty.
Jeff, you or check out whatever you need to to get on it.
Yeah. To make sure I get on.
Yep, yep. I did not see truck potable water on the Thursday workshop agenda. Were we gonna try to sneak it in on Thursday or we gonna try to sneak it in today or? It sounds like you need to do a half day out Thursday.
Yes, I would like to.
So you want to.
Well, the only question was, we had. Done the document, read drafted the document. But Mr. Kavanaugh was waiting on the official, yeah, looks good before he submits it to the. Oh, well, okay.
Has he got anything back doing them?
Okay. As long as it's over there, it's that's we'll see it when it gets back, I guess. Okay.
Right, and it's a, and it's a policy, so.
He blink decision, Doc, you sign, that comes off.
So you want to be done at by noon on Thursday or what?
I need just about a half hour travel time for a meeting at one.
Okay.
So I can be done by twelve thirty and out of here. And if not, I can rearrange.
No, that's not we can let's let's try twelve or twelve fifteen, just.
Okay.
See a plenty of time.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
What is that? Is that the pit or the mill site?
No, it's actually.
You don't tell me if you don't want to, if that's not what it is, by the way.
Yeah. Well, no, it's it's public knowledge. It's a salmon recovery project in Swell Canyon. Where the landowners had some questions, the surrounding lenders had questions about the pending project. And so.
Project, is it?
Rattlesnake Gulch in Lover's Lane, their culvert replacement. That's went through the gamut of salmon recovery. With everybody touching it, but the landowners there still had concerns and we'd been through several conversations. My best bet was to get everybody in the same room. And when I had a chat with David Lindley yesterday, he already had them scheduled for that. With Margaret Newman, so I offered to pop in and that would put everybody in the same room at the same time and we would be. Just create that open communication so we can.
And that's what the upstream neighbors or downstream neighbors?
Well, upstream, I believe all are upstream. And I think they just want to review the project to ensure their fire safety and access safety in those things, so. If we're all in the room at the same time, then there are questions to answer.
I did notice there was a Water Conservancy Board meeting tonight. Are any commissioners planning to attend that?
Was not my agenda. But you're welcome to go.
Wasn't on mine either. I don't know that much about it.
Might be a good thing to go and learn. Darrell Oslin should be bringing. An application. So if if you do want to know about the Water Conservancy Board, it might be a really good meeting to go and learn about the process of what it actually takes to transfer water rights in Washington State.
So who I don't know who's on that board even. I know Craig Stevens.
Uh, I can answer that for you.
You've got the.
Five seconds, Craig Stevens, Scott Andrews, Craig Stevens is not a water right holder, Scott Andrews is a water right holder, Matt Graves is a water right holder. Jeffrey Andrews is not a water right holder. Position number six was Dave McClure. And position number ten or seven is vacant. Uh, which is the ultimate.
Uh, I got Dave McClure's was the alternate two.
All I see is what we have on our.
Is it Craig Stevens on the board?
Correct, he's number one.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Oh, sorry, in heaven creps too is water.
Five member boards. These are both alternate, six and seven are both alternates.
The document that you're looking at, is it on the county commissioner website?
Um, it's posted on Front Door. The agenda and oh, this?
Yeah.
Yes, this is on county commissioners under volunteers or.
Okay.
Whatever, boards and commissions, they changed, it was volunteers needed and now it's boards and commissions as. Four different things in there. One of them is who's serving on what board?
On your share drive as well, if you go to. Your share drive and your appointments, then you go down to the chair or board commission, you will look at.
Okay.
And then you find membership list. And worked on, so that's.
Um, I just have one update. We held our first meeting of the new by state bridge authority yesterday. And the group members appointed me the first vice chair. So that just added to my workload pretty significantly, so.
Trying not to.
I'll be the first vice chair for the first three months and then Mike Fox will be the first vice chair for the next three months. And then in the beginning of twenty four, then we can open it up. But that was what the the C F A, the Commission Formation Agreement required and. And it was news to me that, because I thought I was going to get the second three months.
Do you have a chairperson?
So that's, so the first vice chair is the chairperson.
Okay.
But we're considered vice chairs so that there's one from Oregon, one from Washington. So they'll always be vice chairs and they'll alternate. Next year, you'll be vice chair or in essence, chair for one year, then you'll be the vice the next year. And then it'll alternate back and forth between Oregon and Washington.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, they spend a lot of time.
Is it always gonna be you or the?
No.
The Oregon Commissioner or could it be any of the?
It can be any of the appointees after.
After on January.
On January first, yes. But there, we're gonna have five different committees and. I mean, in essence, we have to start a business from scratch and so you've got governance and bylaws and everything and marketing and. Communication.
Is it gonna be those vice chairs that are holding all those committees or are you gonna designate them as like subcommittees? Where position number three is doing this committee?
So.
Holding their own little subcommittee kind of a thing, or you all happen to go to every one of those committee thing?
No, it's going to be, most people serve on one or two committees.
Right.
That based on their expertise and their background and everything. Uh, though the vice chairs are likely going to be expected to be. Seeing most of it. Well, because we have to design the agendas and everything else and so, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of work for the next few months.
Lucky you. I'm feeling better and better about an insurance conference.
Yeah, I hope so. You get to go and drink and play golf.
No, that's not at this one. That was at the one we, the one that I recommended, we cancel. No golf, no cigars, no whiskey. Um, those days are over. This is just eight hours talking about insurance every day.
For three days.
Three days.
Oh, wow.
Don't have.
Oof.
No, the Club Med Party left when we had left that insurance company.
Is it, is this your first one you're gonna go to that's the the three day seminar thing?
It's longer than the the last one we did, I think was only a day and a half. Um, so it was a day for the regular people and a half day for the board of directors. Um, this one's essentially two and a half. Is we going over pricing and rates coming forward and and all that fun and glorious insurance type stuff.
So should we, coming out of this, should we have the estimate of what it's gonna be for next year?
I would think we'll have at least a guess on whether it's seventeen percent or twenty percent. Uh, but in the same regard, I think. I think if we reach out to our. Fellow commissioners and the. Insurance company that we left. We will find their rates went up last year, the same percentage as this group's rates went up.
Right.
In this group, if it goes up seventeen percent, they're gonna be seventeen, maybe eighteen. I mean, it's it's kind of the same. Scenario, there there could be some smaller changes. And I think there will be to what counts as a claim and what constitutes claim and things like that, but. There'll be discussion there.
Like if it's, if it's under what we just pay out, then it's not considered a claim.
Hopefully, because that was, that was one of the concerns a lot of the counties had is you get dinged for a claim, even though. The insurance.
Even though there was no claim.
So you had a lot of people not reporting claims, so that if you did report five broken windfields. You had a lot of claims, you know, and to me, a claim is something that has substantial value, not.
Right.
Some kind.
Would they actually pay something out?
It will, it's, I'm curious if they go into some kind of a ranked. A ranked claim system, or if they just make it if it's below your deductible, it doesn't count as a claim. Um, I personally would love to see a ranked claim, so if you pay out a two million dollar, it gets a hundred percent credit of one. You know, if you barely paid out twenty five thousand or something, then maybe it's only twenty five percent of. One full credit, so you get some kind of ranking.
For your multiplier.
Yeah, some kind of multiplier in there that would give it a more. The the hard part is you get. Places like Island County that gets hit hard by, you know, one person getting hit in a crosswalk or something and pay out as a eight million dollar claim. And, you know. You only got one, but boy, it's a big. Um, so if you. That's the, I guess the good part about having a pool is you're all sharing in the. If one county's really bad at their insurance, you're all paying a higher premium because they're getting a lower premium. Um, we're not a county that has a lot of claims, so I wanna try to hope that we. Number one, continue to do that, but we're also not subsidizing counties that are lacking in their. Uh, responsibilities to maintain their claims at a low rate. So I don't, it'll be interesting, insurance is, I don't know, it's kind of weird, I find it kind of exciting. Anyway. That is in the lovely city of Spokane. And then there's one in the fall in, I believe, in a Cortis, which is North Bugeon Sound area is the Falcon, if I remember right. What's that's the other difference between this one and last one? The last one. Um, most of their stuff was on Zoom, they had one conference. Uh, at the casino in Spokane a year and this one is three conferences and many more meetings. Um, I did go to the Southwest Washington Workforce Board of Directors over the last, I don't know, week. Or maybe two now, might not have updated you. Nothing really to report, nothing really changing. They did do the preliminary budget, which is about the same. The only active. Art we have is is actually work source. And. We don't necessarily see a lot from Southwest Washington workforce because we've. Received a lot in the past, so it's time to let everybody else get their first share before we get our first share back again.
Was Richard there?
Um, no, it was just board of directors, which is just the four commissioners, which. Two of them were new kid, kid attached, well, actually, they were all new, kid attached was new. Um, Skamania County was the new commissioner, they had changed commissioners. Uh, the commissioner that used to sit on it is no longer sitting on it, so their new guy is. And, uh, the board chair, since it's mainly Yakima, and it's kind of a Yakima County thing. Um, is actually the new Yakima County Commissioner, which, um, I was impressed for a very smart individual. Um, so far.
Who's the new Yakima Commissioner?
Um, can't think of his name off my head, he replaced the. It could be, yeah. The one person did run for reelection, the the gentleman. Um, and this guy took over, but he seems very gung ho. Knowledgeable, so far you can tell that this was his first meeting on this board as a board of director, but he he did his homework. But yeah, it was. Other than me and him, it was kind of crickets because everybody else was brand new and didn't know what they were doing, so. Um, it 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 flowed, it'll be back to. More activists, we bring those people up to speed.
So we have on our agenda for the eighteenth, well, at least it's on mine, Swissler Project Meeting with Benton County. Uh, we like to discuss that, uh, it sounds like the board is might be interested in going a different direction. What's this?
On the eighteenth?
Yeah, it's what's shown on my screen.
I don't have it, must be on your calendar, not on.
On my calendar, I think I I wrote it down when they came in.
Oh, when.
Discuss it.
Richard, well, either that or Richard said, I think Richard said in his last update, there's a Swissler meeting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that maybe that's where you dotted it on your calendar.
That's, you know, on Tuesday, the eighteenth, so I didn't know if we wanted to send anyone with directions or if we want to have a discussion about Swizzler or what you guys want to do. But it sounds like there's discussion that needs to be had with regards to it. Or more discussion.
Yeah, I think we have a lot to learn about it. And I know there was some discussion about lead, but. Looking at where we've came from and what we've handled in the past with water projects and. Wyra and the way where that's located. It does, in my mind, make sense for us to be the lead and stay the lead. Um, Benton County. Does not have a biggest investment as we do in the past for. Water projects and for fish recovery. Or for the planning or for the staff. We haven't. So that I think that's how that relationship evolved was because of that.
Well, I I don't disagree. Under the old. Um, leadership of that department, but that. Leadership's not there and I'm not sure that Richard is. Um, up to speed. Uh, and with all we have going, my concern of transferring the lead was because with all we have going here. Locally. In that department and with the changes and with whatever, do we want to stack one more thing on somebody's plate? Or should we? You know, it it it's Benton County, I I understand where you're coming from there. But they, at this point, they probably have far more knowledge about the actual system. And what's going on there than our current person does. Um, and so I look at it as, you know, how many man hours or woman hours or whatever you want to call it. Is gonna be into that project and since we already are having staffing issues down there. That that to me is one more thing they could at least take out their plate, albeit temporarily. Um, until we can get up to staffing levels to, that's why I was broaching that idea. I still think it's a good idea, but if the board doesn't choose to go that way, I support the board's decision.
My question would be, I think we need further conversation about it because to see. How wide, how deep, how big and where we're at with it, because I would hate to abandon so much done. In the past and so much financially spent for consulting and stuff for the past to abandon that or let it languish. Maybe if we can. Have conversations of where we actually are in that project and do we have time, do we have six months to. Reconfigure and where are we gonna put staff?
Well, that was my other concern is because it sounded like, and correct me if I'm wrong, when they gave, not staff, but when. Uh, College or whoever was gave their Swissler presentation. They were talking about how much work is gonna be taking place in the next six months and this next six months is critical and. We're not gonna have our staff member for a lot of the next six months, so you realize. By keeping that as the lead, there is no lead because they're not gonna be here for three nights.
Well, uh, this is a. You know, almost a two hundred million dollar project. That would be that we've already spent millions of dollars.
We have not, the state has.
Which befuddled through us.
Correct, but I I I.
It's not.
I I want to make, right, I want to make sure anybody listening knows that the county taxpayers have not spent millions of dollars on this project. Well.
But the county has.
Well.
It's been, but we've been reimbursed for it.
Correct.
And so I guess the the thing is, is there's only one person that I know of that. Um, and Benton County doesn't have anybody that's, you know, up on the project, there's only one person and. This board voted to remove that person from any and all. Appointed positions. You know, my thought would be is is if we can't find somebody to take over that position, the best thing would be to do what we did like with. Kurt, and that's bring him on to finish special projects that were their special projects with multimillion dollar investment and I don't know. Why you'd want to not do that.
Well, not only looking at what was the past of it and where we're at now, it's the tipping point of what that's gonna do in the future. And we've brought ourselves very close to that being. Really, really valuable for egg and resources in the future for ourselves. So I would like. To have a bigger, broader conversation about that to make sure we do the right thing. We also need to. Uh, talking about the board appointees, we need to reconsider or look at the Water Conservancy Board and what to do with it and where to take it. It isn't the same as the other boards that we manage, simply manage, it's a little more. Uh, convoluted, it's more of a. Independent board that is a partnership and a partnership with ecology and it has its own. R C W and the way that it functions, it has its own financial way that it functions. I think we need to take a deeper dive into what is that board, how is it functioning and now how do we move it? To the future, which means the same thing. Mr. McClure was that crucial part, they have a meeting this evening, how will they continue their meeting this evening? He was their administrator. And that's a different discussion, I believe, too, also saying, okay. Then being on. Citizens Review Committee as administrator, yes, we can say. But I don't know with Water Conservancy Board, how that functions. So I think each one of these are gonna have to be. Carefully looked at one by one, so we understand them and know where we're going and say, okay. It's a desire of this board that it functions this way, whether Mr. McClure stays or goes, but we need to keep these functioning for the people of this county.
I don't disagree with the importance of the Water Conservancy Board and I don't disagree with the importance. To our constituents on water rights going forward or potentially gain of water rights going forward out of the. Swizzler Project. Um, those are not my concerns. It's just comes down to discussion from this board on who manages or oversight oversees. Um, those issues. Um, for. The county. As the person that used to oversee them is no longer employed by the county. So we need. Someone. Um, on each project. Um, to at least oversee. Each project, whether it's the same person or whether it's different people. That's all I'm saying.
Or he's gonna zoom in in five minutes, so I would make a motion to recess for lunch.
Yep.
And I'll second.
All right. I will turn my mic on so people online can hear me and we will start with pledge of allegiance. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, business agenda, the only change I have is the discussion we had this morning to make an add on. To change our public hearing for the solar land use from August eighth to August first. This, the soonest time staff thought they could make it happen.
And so we talked with. Staff upstairs on whether or not they go.
I have not had any discussions now. Yeah, turn your mic on if you're gonna.
So Mochi won't be back yet.
I think she comes back on the first.
Yeah.
But the other problem is if we have ours on the eighth, at the same time, FSEC is having theirs on the eighth, our citizens don't get a part taken both.
Could we change the time on the eighth?
And just not have an evening meeting? I I'm still, I would rather do it earlier than later.
Uh, could we? Do it? Could we do the evening meeting on the seventh and then our meeting on the eighth and then the day meeting on the eighth?
I don't want to drag it out, I would like to do it earlier.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Do a lot of things, but I don't feel stalling it is the right choice to serve the public. Uh, there's no amount of debate or. Argument that you can argue to make me think that stalling it would be in the best serving the public. Um, so you're welcome to continue, but I won't be engaged. I think the earliest time is the better. Uh, people don't like the can kick down the road forever.
So I I guess the question I have is, we haven't talked to staff. On whether or not they feel confident that in doing the hearing themselves without the planning director present who is overseas. And I thought we set this time so that the planning director could come back so that then they would, the planning director would have time to set up and prepare for the the public hearing. And so we're making a change from what we've already decided and I'm trying to understand the why.
I've already said, because I believe it's in the best interest of the public. To do it earlier.
What role does staff play in that meeting, Jake? What do you see their role in that meeting? How do you see that meeting going? So if Mochi weren't there, what would be missing?
Are you mean, usually there's a staff report.
Okay.
Uh, and update. Um, and then there's the discussion. And then there's questions of staff. Uh, that comes up. And I don't know of any other staff that would probably feel comfortable answering all the questions that come up during discussion.
Well, I would then interrupt and say that. Um, staff does do a brief update before a public hearing, pretty much saying why we're here in a public hearing. And that's it. Um, and. Not always is staff doing that, sometimes the board chair does that, which you've seen in recent months. Now, yes, it could come up that during the public hearing, this board has questions of staff and if staff isn't here, the board can always choose to hold the hearing open. For a whole nother week if it so chose to get in whatever questions it had. Um, or two weeks or six months, if it so chooses, it doesn't have to close the public hearing on said date if it has. Specific questions that can't be answered.
So is your goal to capture public testimony?
My goal?
Yes, in this meeting, what's your goal?
I guess I would say my goal is to not screw up in front of the general public by taking so long to hold our public hearing that FSEC makes its determination. Before we make. Before we make our final determination, because I believe some people in this county are stalling on purpose. And the sooner we can get to whatever determination we're gonna make, the better for the public.
I'm assuming you're referencing me.
I'm not referencing anybody.
Because who else would have the ability to stall, sir?
If we, if we hold that meeting, then are you committing to be? Presenting the meeting, you know, presiding over the meeting and. Uh, in place of staff is what I'm.
I will give the staff update at the beginning of the meeting, uh, just like I have for other public.
And then coordinate maybe with planning staff to see. Where their input is with this. Go talk to them and see how they feel about being at the meeting in place of. Uh, because I agree that the, it's really unfortunate that we always have such a short time with FSEC, but again, we're fate bumping against that border.
I guess my argument is what if FSEC decides to hold their meeting on the eighth and they vote at six thirty that it is consistent, be it, we haven't determined. And made our official ruling until seven thirty. Hmm, whoops.
I would try to remind the chair that. Uh, what FSEC is determining during their meeting is the land use consistency at the time of the application. Uh, we for, we instituted interim emergency zoning after the application was submitted. And so I don't see by by trying to do it quicker, how you're going to change anything. Because it all comes down to the time of the application submittal and that's just.
Well, um, I guess. I will. Say this, we're eating in a citizen comment time trying to approve a business agenda for today. Um, so I would certainly hope that we can approve the business agenda and have our debate on our own time versus the citizens.
Do you need a motion or any?
I need a motion on approval or denial of the business agenda with the add-ons or no add-ons.
I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with the add-on under new business. Um, underneath the quadrant, um, for, uh, the discussion on whether or not to change the hearing date for. Uh, the interim zoning and then also, um, after three o'clock, uh, natural resources wastewater update discussion. Discussions.
And I'll second.
Um, you didn't mention the actual FSEC agreement that is the official add-on.
And I would also include the add-on, the interagency agreement on the Washington State Environment Energy Facility Site Evaluation Commission. Click that county for the purposes of providing reimbursement to click attack county for staff review of information related to the carriage or solar project. Effective June first twenty twenty-three through June first twenty twenty-four with maximum reimbursement not to exceed fifty thousand.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion on the add-on?
As well as an add-on under the discussion for appealing the Department of Ecology's decision to approve the shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit. S H two thousand two zero two two dash zero three, the pit site trailhead project.
I was gonna say that, that one's a regular agenda.
Oh.
Uh, so we'll go with the official motion that's already been made and the official second that's already been made and we'll say any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the business agenda with the two add-ons, uh, three add-ons, sorry, S stipulated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Um, no meeting minutes. Moving into citizen comments, uh, and I will publicly apologize to citizens for eating up some time. Um, with that, we'll go into citizen comments. This comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. Please state your name and general location for the record. At the start of your testimony, please try to make sure your testimony is pertinent to county matters or in county matters. Um, and as always, at the end of citizen comment, uh, the commissioners will have a time to have responses. So true. So, uh, we'll start with in the room before we go online. Uh, does anybody in the room have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? All right, make sure the little mics are green instead of red and fire away. We have our clock running, Miss Alyssa.
Hi, Mike, and this is my wife Theresa. We were here last week to discuss the nuisance board that, uh, seems to be progressing. I don't know where that sits right now, but. Here to say some facts traits that were made in the comments from the commissioner. And last week's meeting and basically there are name. You were. Very.
Well, we want to say that we're very disappointed in you, Dan Christopher, um, with your response to our comment. We, along with three other people, um, filed a nuisance complaint and. In your response, you made some statements that were misleading at best, possibly slanderous. And, um, you stated that. When people file. Code complaints or nuisance complaints, that sometimes they just want you to do it. And do what they want because that's what they want. Other times is because they don't like their neighbor.
I'll tell you right now, I do not know the person to tell you if I like him or dislike him. I just know what's right and what's wrong. What the law says and what the law doesn't say. Whether I like him or dislike him has nothing to do with it. I'm not, we're not going after anybody for malice. Or how they feel or how I feel about them. I'm trying to protect the neighborhood.
And you also.
All I'm trying to do.
You also stated that, um, sometimes people use the code as a weapon. And then your final statement was this last case bears some of that. We were the only case that day. So. We feel that you made those remarks against us. And it wasn't right and it's not true.
Well, I would apologize if you took it that way because that was not my intent, but I can see how you took it that way and I apologize.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, going online, does anybody online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners? Hey, we'll go back in the room. Does anybody else have comment in the room for the Board of Commissioners? And pause in the room. Um, so if anybody in the room or anybody online has comment for the Board of Commissioners, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Or get our attention in any way. Okay, here she comes.
Kathy Moko goes now. Uh, two things. First, uh, Community Days was amazing. A little hot, but amazing. And, uh. I mean downtown was full and. Courthouse lawn was full and just there were people everywhere. And the. Interesting thing, the next morning at about nine thirty, I was up and about, so I came into town. You would never know that. Any of it was even there. I don't know who. Or how. It all got cleaned up for all the people that were there and. Everything. I mean, it was really super. Amazing. Anyway, very successful. Totally different topic. Um. I was just driving around yesterday over to the side of the courthouse. And. You know, you've done all the new. Parking lots and everything and it's all finished and it's all been, it looks some of it at least newly striped. And it really, everything looks really, really good. So just thought I'd compliment you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the room or online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? If you do have citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself or I see one hand.
Yama Eldred Goldendale, I'm just curious, nine, eight years that I've. Halfway attended the Commissioner's meeting, I've heard at least. Six different complaints in those years. The same things that Thompsons are talking about. And why now is it so complicated? Why, I mean. This issue isn't new, been brought up before. So why, why are you, um, you know, wha- what is the problem that we have to deal with?
I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. Um, and please bear with me while I interrupt. Um, I have before me an application for you to sit on the nuisance board of appeals. If you're so wishing to do so. You're going to do, going to need to do so with a open mind. And not have, hang on, let me finish, please. I'm trying to help you.
I'm not stating an opinion, I'm asking a question.
So I, I. Uh, in your own best interest, I would advise you to be as neutral as possible, so your nomination might actually get approved.
Yeah, okay.
I, I mean, that's, I'm trying to help. Um, for the Thompsons. That is the man I'm hoping to appoint to be on the news report of appeals. As you can obviously see. He's very law and order, very constitutional and doesn't like me. Um, so you should be in favor of that. Um, and I'm hoping to get him passed. Well, you should know that there's not a bias that I brought in my crony to do my bidding. Right, but I don't want any opinion of collaboration. Or I picked my own choice, who's gonna do my bidding is my goal in this. Is a completely outsider.
By people that want to solve problems.
Okay. Uh, any other public comment before the Board of Commissioners? I see online two six six two is unmuted themselves.
Yes, hello, can I, um, make a comment?
Yes, name and general location for the record, please.
Uh, Tracy in Lyle, Wash- Lyle, Washington. And, um, I sent, uh, you commissioners an email, um. Last week and and then this morning, and I'm not sure if you were able to open any attachments. But it's in regard to the, um, address problem in Lyle again. Um, there's le- legal addresses that aren't connected to a parcel or a lot. Um, in the county rec or in the county records. And, uh, one of them is five oh one Washington Street, which shows up as a, as a West District Court in Lyle. Which we all know is not a West District Court. And I'm just hoping that the commissioners could take this serious because the county is the one that's responsible for. The data that goes into the GIS and they're used in the census. They're used in the FEMA blood map. They're used in emergency management and, um, there is not a courthouse, never has been a courthouse in Lyle. And there is not a five oh one Washington Street and that needs to be corrected. So, uh, last week when I made the comment of the addresses, uh, Mr. Anderson, um, said that. One of the addresses I said, uh, that was not a legal address is five twenty Washington Street and, uh, Mr. Anderson. Uh, told me that that was to the Lyle Fire Department and I'd just like to tell him that, um, the Lyle Fire Department address is five fourteen. Washington Street, not five twenty as shows up on your mapping system. And then the other one is eight thirty, uh, Clickat Street. It doesn't, it doesn't go to anything and that, um. Is also an, an, an address that's legal, but. So the postmaster in Lyle told me that the county is responsible for making legal addresses. Um, that the, the county sends the postmaster the addresses and she adds them to her database. Even though they don't go to a parcel and they don't get mailed. And I'm just wondering why this is happening and why it's not corrected. So appreciate you're looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Staff did have a comment, so I will allow that. Do we need to fire up that mic there or come forward or something so everybody can hear? That mic is horrible.
Okay, your deputy clerk spent at least half an hour or more with. Uh, the commenter right now this morning and this has all been researched. She's worked with Public Works. She worked with the. Addressing, um. Employee that addresses all of this.
Oh, got it, yeah.
And well, GIS as well as the addresses and that person also handles like census data. Most of the addresses that the commenter is referring to have nothing to do with the county at all. They're on FEMA maps, they're on, uh, the postal service maps. And things have been verified and this was discussed with her this morning. There's no need to. Address the board with a topic that's been covered, it handled.
So for clarification, you're saying this is not a county map issue. This is a third-party app map issue that the county has no control or say-so over. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Um, any other citizen comment from online or in the room that hasn't had a chance to make comment yet? I see one coming forward. Greg Wagner was seized. Last week during the Commissioner's meeting, Jake Anderson attended by Zoom. Three times he says, I can't hear you. This happens all the time during our citizens comment through these public meetings here. When the commissioners failed to turn their mics on or lean back in their chairs and nobody can hear what's being said. This is, meeting is supposed to be held according to the Open Public Meetings Act where citizens can hear what our leaders are saying. People on Zoom couldn't hear you last week either. So this is an issue when you don't talk into your microphone. So we need that clarified. We need that fixed. People need to hear what you're saying. You work for us, we'd like to hear what you're saying. And also I'd like to say that the way the chairman handles the executive sessions needs to be corrected. The way you handle it is not quite right. I have information here for you. I hope that you'll read it and start handling them correctly. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. I'm more than willing to look at here.
Can we mute two six six two? I'm getting feedback.
Yeah, feedback from two six six two. Um, any other citizen comment from inside or outside the room? Please unmute yourself or wave or raise your hand or get our attention. Might do a last call because our responses tend to go longer than the five minutes, so we might steal the two minutes of citizen comment if nobody has anything. So I will go last call in the room or online for citizen comments. To the Board of Commissioners today. And I hear not. So we will open with, uh, Commissioner responses if they so choose to do so. Um, I guess I will start since I kind of already started. I guess all I can address to you guys, because you do have counsel, we have counsel, it's in council and we shouldn't be discussing the case. Um, is we're working on the nuisance board of appeals. There's two vacant seats because it hasn't been used in three years, probably four years. Uh, I'm hoping to make an appointment today and then Commissioner District One also needs to find an appointment. Um, when we get that handled, I'm sure we will get a hearing scheduled. Uh, which will allow you a chance to present your case to somebody that's not us. Um, other than that, I can't get into the case itself. You'll have to speak to counsel. The counsel is how that normally operates. Um, Kathy, I agree, parking, we heard a lot of complaints about parking or lack of parking and all the parking fiascos last year and I think for. Community days, it was quite evident that those ninety-six, I believe, new parking spots. Um, were well used. We still have a little. We still have a little curb work to do at the old annex over there that's going to be done in August. But yeah, I think it's a, a much better to have all that parking in there. Tracy's address problem, yes, it's, it's been asked and answered multiple times. It's been researched that one might be Clickatet Street, but one might be Clickatet Avenue. One might be White Salmon, one might be Lyle, these are not county issues. They're issues with the website you're looking at your addresses on. Greg about hearing, yes, we, my problem seems to be, and I'll admit it, when my seatmates start talking, I always had issues last year because one commissioner would turn to the other one and talk, and then I'm looking over their back. And I felt that kind of rude. So anytime they start talking, I tend to back up in hopes that they can see each other and talk, but then I say something and I'm away from the mic. So it's not done on purpose, it's trying to be done to be polite to the other seatmates, but yes, and I continue to bring it forward because it helps me get close. Well, I can just go closer to the mic too. What else did I have? Oh, and then your comments that being able to hear on Zoom and whatnot are mandatory under the Open Public Meeting Act. And I do have to clarify that one, the only thing that's mandatory under the Open Public Meeting Act is that we actually open this room for the public. It's not that we're on Zoom, it's not that we have microphones. It's just that the room is open for the public. So the fact that we're zooming is above and beyond the Open Public Meeting Act. And the fact that we have microphones is above and beyond the Open Public Meeting Act. But I hear where you're coming from, and I will read this document. And if I have questions, which I'm sure I will, I'll probably reach out to you and get your take on what you feel the problem is, if I can't understand it by reading it. Because I am concerned about that, so. With that, either you have comments that you want to say?
I can be short, I just want to thank everybody for coming in today. And thank you for coming back, Thompsons. And respectful dialogue is the only way to make things better. And we'll all work at that, and I appreciate all of you.
And I will say, I hope to bring forward at least one, hopefully two names for next week for the nuisance board of appeals. And other than that, thank you all for your comments. And I will have staff make copies of the MRSC document that you provided, Mr. Wagner, and we will review that.
Yeah, I thought when, when this board, I'll throw one more up, you're done, sorry. When this board started and it made a more open public process for appointments to boards, and tried to make sure it could get the public involved to apply and sit on different boards. I actually thought it'd be well received by the general public, and the public would want to get involved in their government and apply to sit on various boards and commissions. Absolutely not the case. I mean, it's absolute crickets when we're calling for people to sit on various boards and commissions. Unless they have some kind of a financial interest in that board, they're just not interested. So I mean, it's, it's almost pulling teeth. So I sympathize with Commissioner Anderson trying to find somebody that can be a a regular citizen that wants to spend their time in a board meeting. Albeit, this board doesn't meet very often, so it's one of the most convenient, but plenty of boards and commissions to sit out there if people listening want to apply to sit on one. With that, it is one thirty, so we will end citizen comment. If you want staff to copy these now, or are you happy to wait until after the meeting, sir?
After meetings, as long as I get them.
With that, I'll thank everybody for coming in, you do. You are heard, I, I am listening. You may or may not think you're heard, but you are. And, and I apologize because sometimes I come off a little bruff. I'm kind of, I guess you can refer to me as an old stale cookie, very hard and crunchy on the outside and soft and gooey on the inside. So your first impression may be that crunchy exterior, but I understand where my comments, that again, I will state, were not directed at you. I can understand how you took them as directed at you. By the way, you said you took them. So again, last thing, I want to apologize again for however you took them. Whatever I said that made you take them that way was definitely not my intention. With that, I will end that, and we will move on to one thirty, which is public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. We have the planning department and associate planner Denise Lee, public meeting for the final approval of BSP twenty twenty-one dash zero one. CrossFit Mount Adams applicants, Matthew and Connie Riley.
I'm sitting way up here. Um, okay. Binding site plan BSP twenty twenty-one oh one is a proposal to expand parcel zero three, one zero, one three, four, four, zero, zero, one, two, zero, zero, and oh three, ten, thirteen, forty-four, oh, oh, thirteen, oh, oh, into three lots in order to create another fitness facility. The proposal is located on the corner of Northwest Loop and North Main in White Salmon within a portion in Clickatet County. The admin review of the shore plot has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health, treasure and planning departments. All conditions attached to claimant approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve BSP twenty twenty-one oh one, a motion will be need to be made. Applicants, Matthew and Connie Riley.
Thank you for that staff report. I'm assuming my seatmates have had time to look over this. BSP in our packets. Now is the time for any questions or comments of staff that they may have.
So why is it a binding site plan and not just a short plot?
Because of the zoning. I believe it's commercial zone. And in that zone, they can, as long as they're meeting the requirements, they can do pretty much what they want in there. They just have to go through binding site plan to ensure that they're meeting all like access requirements and setback requirements.
Do you know? I don't think we've done much in commercial zones, so.
I don't think we've done anything in a commercial zone in two years.
Right. Mr. Chairman, having before us the BSP twenty twenty-one dash zero one for CrossFit Mount Adams, the applicants, Matthew and Connie Riley, I would make a motion to approve the binding site plan.
And I'll second.
Hey, see, kid myself. We have a motion and a second to approve the binding site plan BSP twenty twenty-one dash zero one. CrossFist Matt, Mount Adams, or yeah, Mount Adams applicants, Matthew and Connie Riley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of BSP twenty twenty-one dash zero one, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you, staff, for the update. I got it said before I go sign.
I got it.
Or we can go back and do them if you have them, that's fine. Right, I just need the date. Perfect, yep, just go ahead and leave in there, we'll do that. Right now, thank you for. With that, for my seatmates, I will advise that staff just advise us that we do have minutes to approve from June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. If we would like to go back and do that before we move on, that would be great. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion, a second to pass the minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. See, fixed, just like that. Next up is one forty. It's the add-on, which is the interagency agreement amongst the Washington State Energy Site Facility Evaluation Council in Clickatet County for the purpose of providing reimbursement to Clickatet County for staff review and information related to the Carrager Solar Project. The effective date of this agreement is June one, twenty twenty-three through June one, twenty twenty-four. Maximum reimbursement not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. I would leave it up to my seatmates if they just want to take a vote, or if they would like to have discussion before vote.
Do you have any issues with it, since it's not on the consent agenda?
I have a lot of issues. And I, for one, will not be signing.
Would you like to explain why?
I think it pretty much has us doing the state's bidding and facilitating their work. And their bidding, it has in there that I will issue a franchise agreement and other stipulations that by signing the contract I must do that I don't know that I'm ready to do. I also very much disagree with the legal wording in the document that turns over our legal right to file a claim in anywhere other than Thurston County. I think that is the worst possible legal mistake anybody could ever make, is give away their venue of choice. So on multiple reasons, I will not be approving. That's, that's my.
This document's been going through a process, and I've had some other pressing issues on my plate. Can we ask for more time to reevaluate this for a week so I can look through it and look some things up that I'd like to look up, or do we need to make the decision today?
Good. Technically, we don't have to make a decision until we make a decision.
Okay.
I know they wanted a month ago, but you know, that is what it is.
And I know people don't like to hear I was busy, but
You're very busy.
I really, it's a legal document, and I know it's had legal review, but I have my questions just from a quick look, I'd like to do an in-depth look for myself at least.
So for the, for the record, this is a reimbursement agreement so that when the county spends time, effort and money reviewing the application for the Carrager Solar Project moving forward, whether it's land use consistency or anything else that we can bill the state and thus the applicant for that time. We've had multiple iterations of this document, we have looked at it many times. Yeah, it's been in front of the board multiple times.
I didn't know there was multiple reiterations, we got a final document.
We had sent it back out for more information. And if there are questions or concerns that my seatmates have, I'm of course willing to listen to that and take that into consideration. Considering this is just a reimbursement agreement, we have a PA opinion request that states that, that this puts us in no legal jeopardy with regards to having to do the bidding of FSAC. If the board would like to, or a commissioner would like to change and pull out the venue of jurisdiction, that's something, it being that it's an agreement, you can make changes until it's signed, and then you can still make changes. You can get both sides to agree to it. Hopefully, we can make the effective date be from June first so that if our staff does spend any time in the next few weeks reviewing FSAC documents that we can charge for that. The whole goal of this was so that the, the citizens of the county were not on the hook for having to pay where any of us who apply for any permits or anything, we have to, we have to pay. And so being that this is going through a state process, the goal all the way along was to ensure that the citizens of the county are not paying to review something that's going through a state process, which the board has been directing staff to do, which is review and comment on documents.
Well, that's exactly my, I, I want to go through it a little closer. I have concerns about what can be paid back and what will not be paid back because we've already had some differences with our Public Works Department in conversations about normal things that they would bill for, and he was told, no, we won't be recapping those. So I'd like to see signing on to this, what does that mean? In a situation like that, for the bigger recap of things that we actually deserve and need versus signing off, and then I've signed off on something that I'm not sure what I've done.
Well, and I guess for me is, yes, I want the companies to reimburse the county for any and all costs incurred in doing their permit, but I don't want to do so by putting, signing a document that essentially makes the county FSAC's lackey to do their work for them. And if they disagree, we're not allowed to disagree anymore with how they're doing it, otherwise we don't get paid. This document and its wording, I find very much, we will facilitate the consistency hearing, we will facilitate. I don't know that I'm facilitating. Nor am I willing to accept your measly fifty thousand dollar buy-off to facilitate you help in a permit. So, yeah, and I don't believe our staff is going to have anywhere near that amount of time in this, as it is FSAC doing the work, unless we want our staff to do all of the work. Which again, I don't want. So I, I'm fine with kicking it down the road a week or whatever, however long you need to look at the document, but far too minute, far too many things and far too much wording in there that I, not in the original document of the reimbursement agreement, I don't think I really see a problem in there is the venue choice. It's the scope of work in amendment A and B of you will do this, and you will do this, and you will, I know, I don't work for you, I don't have to do your bidding FSAC, I'm sorry. And that's my opinion, and if it costs the county thirty thousand dollars because we want to fight their, you know, like Public Works said, we're not going to get a road hall agreement that they tear up the road and they got to fix it or put an overlay on it. I'm, I don't think I'm going to have the same answer as FSAC on most of these issues. And so I'm certainly not going to just facilitate and make their lives easy. Either, so, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a no on the document, but if the board needs more time to reach consensus, whether that's yes or no, I'm fine with it.
For the record, that is not a measly fifty thousand dollar buy-off. That is called a reimbursement not to exceed amount. And that is so that the FSAC and their ability to bill, because they're going to bill the applicant, that applicant has some security of, an expectation of not to exceed amounts that they can budget. It is in no way buy-off. If you would like to change the venue or the governing law, we have a week, would you like to make those changes, Commissioner Christopher? So that the county can be better protected?
I've already said I'm not changing the document, I'm not signing the document at the board. The consensus of the board sees fit to do so, they have the choice to do so, I am not signing the doc.
I would like to have a week to come back to you, Jake, and discuss anything I see in here, and then we could go from there.
Look forward to the discussion.
Okay. Can I get a copy? A hard copy? Thank you.
Alrighty. Add-on number one. Add-on, well, it wasn't an add-on, unfinished business number two, discussion on appealing the Department of Ecology's decision to approve shoreline substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit, SH two zero two two dash zero three for the Pitt Trailhead Project. This is carried forward one week. This is an issue which Mrs. Oler recused herself, leaving the two of us. My vote is to appeal. um, recused herself, leaving the two of us. Um, my vote is to appeal. You wanted a week?
So the prosecuting attorney was in here this morning. Uh, we exited the open session or the executive session back into open session, that would have been a perfect time for Commissioner Christopher to ask the questions of prosecuting attorney. Um, so I'm not playing telephone. I don't like to speak for someone. Um, but from my conversation, from the PA, um, that you are not allowed to change your vote after we've already forwarded it, um, and that uh, are come like from my conversations, we do not have legal grounds for an appeal. Um, but if you would like uh, to appeal it anyways, um, I would state that the course of action that may be best for you personally would be to appeal that uh, decision personally. Um, because when I asked the question of the PA, um, do we get to appeal this? Or is it the PA who does the appealing? And from the conversation, it seems that it is the PA's duty to appeal. Uh, not ours. And so while um, you would like to appeal it. Um, I would definitely uh, have a conversation with the PA and fact-check all of this, because I don't want to speak for him. Um, but he was in here this morning, and it would have been a great time to ask the questions um, that you had as well. Um, but from my conversation, um, while I completely understand your feelings um, that you made a decision uh, to approve something based on conditions. Um, from ecologies, from my review of ecology, they removed two of those conditions, because those were conditions that uh, we could not impose legally. Um, and so that being the case, I don't understand where the grounds for an appeal is. Um, though I completely understand how you feel, and um, this is why I think it would be great in the future when uh, we are setting conditions, we understand what conditions we can and cannot set either during a substantial shoreline development permit or A C U P. Um, we always need to know the box that we're sitting in.
Um, okay, I have one question, and I think you said it, but I just wanted clarification. Um, I believe you said that you believe that prosecutor told you that he has the jurisdiction to appeal or not appeal, and so you were going by what he told you that he is not going to appeal, because he doesn't see grounds. Is that correct?
Uh, that was the essence of my conversation that I could recall. But I didn't write it all down.
Perfect. So I, all I wanted to hear. Um, with that, we have a yes and a no, so the item is mute and the item is dead. Um, and it sounds like we will not be appealing. Next up.
Um, if I may, really quick, uh, we pulled it from the agree or from the, the agenda. But the managed service agreement, um, uh, you responded to that last week when you said you did not like or care for how I characterize those things. Um, I wanted to correct the record. Uh, that was an email from me to our IT manager. Um, with my questions and thoughts and changes, that was not meant to go to the organization. Um, in the email that I sent, the email said, I hope that you're going to uh, take a look at this, uh, edit this and then send the, the questions on to them from your perspective, not my perspective. I was writing down what questions and concerns I had based on that ground track that was put before us. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, Commissioner Christopher, uh, not that I was trying to make decisions and change the contract myself.
Hey, thank you. Um, next item for business is Dell, and he walked out of the room. If he wants to hear any part of it, he probably should come back. Did we have the mail thing on the consent agenda, or was it on a separate topic that we were supposed to be? Cuz I'm not seeing it on here. Where's it at? Got it. She just want a little new business time or something to discuss. Got it.
That's the postage, right?
Hang on. We're not there yet. No, we were just getting to me formally making the motion before my seatmates. I guess I'll step down. Um, we have two applicants from District Three uh, that have applied to the nuisance board of appeals. One of them is a two-year-old application from Matt Childs. Uh, but as Matt Childs is already sitting on the board of adjustments, he's already sitting on the Title Twelve Road Committee Standard Board. And he's now sitting on our FSEC board. Um, I think three are enough, uh, for one person at one time. Um, I believe Dell Eldred to be a good and honorable man that believes in law and order. Uh, believes in criminal justice, believes in the Constitution. Um, I believe that he can uh, be presented a case. Uh, and um, be presented with the evidence to know whether there is a violation or not a violation. Um, and so my recommendation before this board is that we appoint Dell Eldred to the nuisance board of appeals representing District Three.
And I would second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
I believe in Mr. Eldred. I think you show up. And that's, that's saying a lot, and I know you're passionate, but I do believe you're a fair man and you'll weigh both sides of whatever comes before.
Exactly. Well, and that's my only recommendation to you is try not to learn about the case before the case gets before you. Uh, so that way you don't have to recuse yourself. And um, then take all of the evidence presented to you. Um, and make a fair and equitable decision if this board so appoints. That is my recommendation.
Okay, so at, at this time, right now, we have one, one member of the board.
About two. JP Enderby is serving, he used to serve on the board and is continuing to serve. Yeah, the board hasn't been active for three years, but he's in District Two. He lives by Greg. Um, but he has chosen to keep his position and he will be happy to serve, so I needed to find somebody from District Three. Jake needed to find somebody from District One. So if the board does choose to appoint you today, which will have that vote in soon as we're done with discussion. Um, then, like Jake says, he thinks he'll be able to grab somebody from next week, and then we can schedule the Thompson um, hearing before that board, and he, I mean, the board doesn't get used much. It might be a one-and-done. Um, kind of a scenario, so, um, but
So, so basically, is, when, when does this board become active, actually? Right now, or?
When something gets
When, yeah, when, when there's an appeal case to be heard before that board. Um, just like the Thompsons didn't like our decision, um, decided to appeal. Um, that, that, but it hasn't happened in four years, so again. You know, um, in this one. I can't get into it, cuz there's a current, yep, like, please don't. So it's like, you, you will be presented all the evidence. Um, go into it with an open mind, look at the evidence, and Okay. Do, do your due diligence and, and make your recommendation based off your constitutional knowledge. Um, uh, with that, any more discussion before we take a vote?
Just that, um, we've always given deference to the commissioner who brings forward names from their commissioner district, so I plan on um, showing that difference.
I appreciate that, sir. Normally, I do bring forth two applications according to our policy, but in this case, we're in a hurry, and I had to, and I I explained the second, but uh, with that, any no further discussion? Uh, we have a motion in a second to appoint Dell Elder to the nuisance board of appeals. I believe they're one-year terms. Are they not, Miss? Are they one-year terms? Am I remembering right? Okay. I won't hold you, you retired any time, sir. Um, with that, we will call the uh, question. Uh, all those in favor of appointing Dell Elder to the nuisance board of appeals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Congratulations, sir, or I'm sorry, or have you wanna take it?
If I may.
Uh, the only other thing I would, hang on, just real quick. Um, the only other thing I would point out is be cautious of uh, Open Public Meeting Act. Don't talk to either of the other two people that are appointed about any of the cases that are brought before you. Um, that way you are fair and unbiased. Try not to talk to the victim, try not to talk to the plaintiff. Um, and that way you go into it completely neutral and nobody has any bombs, but that's just friendly advice.
And I was gonna add some friendly advice to that, so when you're doing that, remember that everything you say or write uh, will likely at some point go in front of a judge, and so you might wanna keep most of what you're thinking or doing off the click-at voice or anything else that, that could potentially be used in a court of law later on. Just because we have a little bit of experience with the Open Public Meetings Act these days.
Um, actually, I'm gonna go out of order. Do you have any questions for us on this appointment thing? If you do, you can ask them later off the record on, call me, email me, we'll chat, whatever. Okay, if you do, you know where we are. Um, thank you all for that one. Uh, moving on, we have the consent agenda.
Was there any issues from my teammates?
I didn't have any.
No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all eight items.
And I would second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to improve the consent agenda with eight items. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Oh, that's, sorry, that's what I kinda did by his appointment. We have it on here, discussion on nuisance board of appeals. Um, and that's where I brought up the application process, but if you have any other discussion for the nuisance board of appeals, we can backtrack and you can have whatever other discussion you have for that word.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we had anything planned by Jordan or something for the, it says the nuisance appeal process, and I know we're gonna have a conversation on Thursday about the, the flow chart.
I would imagine, and this is just me speaking, I guess I would think we're gonna need to have an illegal opinion from a prosecutor as to when someone can or cannot um, file for an appeal. Uh, we're gonna have to go over the flow chart and how we like that flow chart, and then somewhere in that flow chart is gonna have to be, and this is your time where you which file an appeal. Um, so we are gonna have a couple of questions for legal before we get through that process.
Could we invite uh, legal to the conversation on Thursday?
You can if you wanna.
I mean, you've brought up a very good point, you know, whether or not somebody, somebody can put in, uh, sorry. Someone can put in a nuisance appeal, or, or someone can put in a nuisance or code complaint, and they can do so anonymously. And usually the person that appeals it is the person that the complaint is after, not the person who's complaining.
And, and this is not pertaining to any particular case, but under my understanding, what we have is under Clickitack County Building Code fifteen dot oh far dot, dot oh two oh B. It states, further violations of this title is declared unlawful and a public nuisance. And because then it's declared a public nuisance, that allows it to go to the nuisance board of appeals. The question to me is, the violation. Is there an honest to true violation? Can somebody point out in the code where your flower pot has to have a permit? Or your treehouse, you don't have a permit for your treehouse, so yes, there's a violation in the code. Um, somebody needs to be able to point out the violation to me before it ever gets to become a public nuisance. And then be justified to go to the nuisance board of appeals. It has nothing to do with anybody other than I'm not going to try somebody for murder unless somebody says, yeah, it's murder, and they have the gun. Not just, eh, I can't get my way here, so it's murdered, let's send them to trial. Um, and to me, I have a question for legal as to what, what the, what is the violation? What code, what act, what RCW, what, what is the violation? Because if there's a violation, me personally, I don't need to go to a board of appeals. I'll send Georgia after them, write them a ticket. Um, but I can't send my Nazi thug out to write somebody a ticket if they can't find a violation. Um, and so I'm trying to abide by the Constitution and protect people's constitutional rights for undue prosecution. If I don't see a violation. So there's a legal question there, and then when is that inserted into our flow chart is the second question.
So are we going to invite uh, Rebecca or Prosecutor Canal to Thursday's workshop?
We can.
To work on this flow chart?
Um, we can.
We want to direct staff to do so. Which I would definitely like Rebecca or cue there, if we're going to sit down and redo the code and have conversations.
That would then match up to our current code. Correct, and if we decided to update the code later, we might have to make some tweaks to the flow chart, cuz there are some things in there like uh, writing, you know, hundred-dollar violation tickets, whatever, that I wouldn't mind seeing in the flow chart. That may not be into the code, so I would suggest we just come up with a flow chart, so it would help our employees do their job and would help the citizens know where we're at, what's next. Um, and then ask a couple of legal questions we have, and then as we get time, which I'm more than welcome to. I mean, I'll have a workshop on a Wednesday or a Monday or whatever. The board just has to be able to find the time to do it. Uh, where we sit down for four hours and just hammer it out. I'm all fine with more workshops than getting more work done, but see, I was turning my back to you, trying to be, now I feel rude.
No, you're, you're, you're just fine.
Um, so yes, I would say yes. Um, let's direct staff to give them an open invite if they wanna attend.
But we're only taking a small bite this time. We're getting that.
Ideally.
And then we can move on from there, once we get this one piece done.
I think it's gonna be a more, I think it's gonna be a more detailed conversation that's very obviously more time-consuming. Um, especially if we get into actual you know, looking at the, the finance, final print of the code itself. We need to just clarify the code and make sure everybody understands the code, and what comes next and what constitutes violation, and when does it get turned from a violation into a nuisance where they can appeal to the Board of Appeals, and that technically would be nice to get worded out of that flow chart. Um, now I would like, uh, I'm going to send over a legal opinion request on this. Um, and then I suggest we figure out what we're gonna do with the flow chart, and then we can send the flow chart over and say, okay, where does the appeal process float into the flow chart, and let them make that little box on the flow chart. Uh, and then we'll look at flow chart again. That's my recommendation.
Thank you for the great conversation.
Yep. Uh, all right, now we move off. We did consent agenda. We're off to pay estimate number one.
So you motion to approve the warrants? Is that what you're looking for?
Um, you can do that too. Go ahead and do that.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Date ending July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have motion in a second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a, a motion to pay, pay estimate number one and final to DKB Inc. in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and six cents, which includes seven and a half percent sales tax for the KC Services Building HVAC Insulation Project. C one, one, six, two, three.
And I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion second to pay, pay estimate number one and final to DB, DKB. Uh, any further discussion on that? Uh, any further discussion on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes. Um, next up is your postage machine lease renewal. We'll have a brief staff update.
So this this is in regards to the postage machine that is at the courthouse. And currently we are in a sixty three month contract that is coming to expire in approximately between March and April of two thousand twenty four. We pay four hundred and fifty dollars a month for that lease. The there is a new lease proposal for three hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty one cents a month for sixty months. It's a savings of seventy two forty nine. And I wanted to see if I could get permission to proceed and.
So if we're willing to end our lease a year early and sign up for a new lease on a whatever that is a five year term, we will end up saving seventy five dollars a month from what we're currently getting. Uh, does it come with new equipment or the same?
Comes with new equipment, updated equipment.
So maybe there's less glitches when people actually do the mail. Um, do my teammates have any questions of staff on this or recommendations or?
Just one question. Is this what Heather or Joe be here for? Oh, okay.
I was gonna get to her next. I I don't have any concerns. It saves money. It gives us better machinery. Um, I don't mind extending the lease because we're gonna be under some kind of lease with some kind of postal machine for the rest of our lives or until we stop sending mail. Um, so I I don't have any issues. So you have my consensus.
The one we're under now, we're at sixty three months. So we're outside of the lease agreement. So we're not gonna be breaking the lease and having to pay.
Now by renewing, it did completely changes.
We're inside the lease that we sell here.
Yeah, and maintenance installation and training.
They're willing.
They're allowing us to extend the lease essentially. Yeah, no, every where we can save money in phones or mail machines. And I very much appreciate you guys looking into ways to save us money.
And would you, would you like a motion? Would you, would you like?
Oh, I guess I can send talking about saving money. Uh, M R F E has an open public meetings training with the new laws that came out that I wanted to attend. It's forty bucks, but I read on there that our new insurance company pays for one person from our county to go. Um, so I reached out to our risks manager and he is unaware of anybody from our county attending it. So he is currently reaching out to our insurance carrier to give me the code that would allow me to go without having to pay forty bucks. I know it's forty bucks, but making make the staff jump through hoops.
I think you are, you can get as much open public meetings act training as you can get. You should do so.
I think we should all. Um, with that, we'll go out of order and ask our auditor if she had something for us.
She is my invite this afternoon.
Your invite.
Our agenda item on the um, I got lost here. Water Conservancy Board.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Um, do you want to?
So she was gonna sit through the meeting with us.
Um, well, we have a Water Conservancy Board member Craig Stevens on the agenda. Do you want to get to your add on? Before that, or do you want to get to your add on after that?
No, she's just here in case we have questions.
Got it.
Okay.
Um. With that, I would say I'm assuming we have Mr. Craig Stevens. Is that you, sir? Um, if you're willing to start early and you don't need anybody else or whatever, we will take you and because otherwise I'll move on and I don't want to make you wait. So.
Greg Stevens, I'm Chair of the Water Conservancy Board. And I'm just wanted to come in and find out what your plans are for the Water Conservancy Board going forward after your action last week.
I don't know. We haven't discussed.
Well, you made a radical decision last week. In my opinion, and you had no plans. It was just a spur of the moment thing or?
Well, I will say that uh it was not a radical decision. Um, I will say that there is reasons behind it, but I am not going to get into reasons of uh that would get into publicly bad mouthing or shaming or any of that in ex county employee. So um, there are reasons, but I'm not going to air grievances publicly. Um, yes, there are changes that are currently being made that will probably be made. And it sounds like we'll have some recommendations moving forward. Uh, but no, not a quicker irrational decision. Um, it has actually been talked about uh off and on. Um, although be it very few words, we're probably three months.
So it's been discussed somewhere. Can I get a date? And whatever meeting that was, so I can watch the recording and see what was discussed.
I I can't tell you which date it was. You'd have to go back and look at the recordings to pick it out.
For the last three months.
Since the retirement was given over to us, that would be the start date and the look for.
So what are we? I don't know if you realize what the Water Conservancy Board does or?
I'm aware.
Okay. Well, I've never seen except for Jake. I've never seen anyone at a meeting. So I'm not sure you really know what we do at the meetings. The.
Okay, sir, this is a time for you to either give the board an update, not to give a Spanish Inquisition of the board.
Well, I need to know what you're doing to fill the position that the that person was in.
Um, I've already made a recommendation to replace the Economic Development Director. Um, which would then, in my opinion, oversee that board. But this board chose not to go that route yet. So when this board finally chooses to go that route, I would assume we would have an economic development director who would then oversee that board. But until we do, we need to have somebody that can temporarily oversee that board.
Right, and?
And we'll have discussions.
Well, life goes on. I spent the weekend putting together the meeting for tonight that we're having uh at seven o'clock. You guys are invited. Um. Lot of time on the phone, forty some phone calls. That's a job that the person that was dismissed did and did very well. There's a lot of experience there, twenty some years of experience in the Water Conservancy Board. And I'm just concerned the method used to dismiss them. So.
I I have a question. Um, it on your board, learning about the board, I I know the overall of the board, but learning about the current board. Um, on our website, it has the board members, but it doesn't have your positions on the board. So you're a chairperson.
I'm I'm chair this year and the person dismissed was the uh Secretary Treasurer. Coordinator, I guess, you'd even add on to the end of that.
You did all your administrative work.
Oh, yeah, all the minutes, the you know, every one of these changes. In fact, we got one from Benton County coming in tonight change. Uh, they'll require a public notice depending on where I haven't seen it yet, but I mean, it could be a foot long legal description that has to be in the paper. And if one comma or a dash is out of place, somebody will protest it and then it all has to be redone again. Another five hundred thousand dollars for habitizing fee. So I mean, it's a it's a really involved position. You 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 take somebody. You see, I couldn't do that. I mean, I I'd look at it. If it looked pretty good, it's pretty good. That's where I am, but it takes a guy uh or a person that can, you know, pay attention to details, detail, really detail. And we don't have, we don't have any of the um, contact information, all that stuff. You know, I just luckily I had some contact information. But the board is an important board and I think by doing what you did and I don't, I'm sorry you think I'm getting in your face, but I mean, we in fact, I think Jake came up with the idea uh to snag that creek coming off uh Mount Adams uh to feed white salmon so they could have water. Here, what was that ten years ago or so? Um, I mean, we all these farms come into us and they were spreading their water so they can get more crops. More income for the county.
I I I don't disagree that the board is very important board and used to continue being a very important board going forward. The differences over who is the administrative secretary uh on behalf of the county for this board. And again, I can't get into personnel decisions of past public employees. I know things that you don't know. You just have to trust that. Um, I hope that maybe the board can make a recommendation of a different name that the the commissioners can look into. Um, it nothing stops a private individual from working with you on a private way. Um, as long as they're not appointed by the board. Um, so there's nothing to stop further communication other than actively working for the county or being an appointment of the county. Uh, and all I can say is I have reasons. Um, but trying to keep us out of the next lawsuit, I'm gonna keep the reasons.
Sure. I I mean, you know the law a lot better than I do. Um. So would it be possible for the board to hire that person back as a contract employee?
I.
While we while we do this change instead of just.
I I made my decision to remove that person from the board for a reason, and I would not in good faith put them back.
May I, Chair? Since I have a little bit of experience on the Water Conservancy Board, since I served on it for a few years. Um, two very important things. Uh, number one, uh, the Water Conservancy Board is its own individual organization. And um, the Board of County Commissioner gives a grant to the Water Conservancy Board and appoints those members. Uh, Commissioner Dave McClure was an alternate member. He was also staff, much like Jeff King is staff uh for uh the SAR teams. Um, the decision ought to hire him or not is up to the Water Conservancy Board. It is not up to the Board of County Commissioners.
Decision on whether to appoint or not appoint the commissioners to sit on that board.
That is, that is up to, that is up to the board. But I would also like to mention that you said uh to serve in a contract capacity. Um, and so what you're in essence saying is, is the board just canceled the contract with the person um who's been doing that job for a very long time. I'd also like the board to know that it is no small task to be and sit and make a decision on the Water Conservancy Board. It is a minimum of forty hours of education. Uh, just to be able to make a decision. And that's the beginning. On top of that, there's continuing education. They only host those meetings once a year for those educations. It's a week long thing. Um, you can't just have uh someone like an economic development director just sit in to manage that. This is about as highly specialized and technical as we have in the county of all things. Uh, water rights are ridiculously complex. Um, and so I asked the question last week whether or not that we were removing this person from all and everything. And it sounds like we did cancel that contract. I think um what Mr. Stevens is asking right now um is not an inquisition, but he's asking, what are we supposed to do if we don't have staff? Um, with the knowledge and experience to manage this. And he's asking for directions since they have a meeting tonight. I don't know anyone in the county um that can do this. Uh, there's only a few um organizations in the state that that have the experience with water rights, people like Aspect Consulting. Uh, you don't want to know what they charge per hour. Um, I'd also like to to set the record straight that whenever uh Mr. McClure would serve on on the board and and uh vote decision making capacity, he would not charge for his time. Um, I am frankly beyond disappointed uh with this board in the fact that we can sit here and say, we are removing someone from a from a position. And I'm not gonna tell you why, because I don't want it to look bad in the public. By saying that, you're in essence impugning someone's reputation in public. And you're doing that to somebody who has spent an inordinate amount of time volunteering in this community uh working for this county. And you're going after their reputation by saying things like that. If you can't say the reasons and rationale, try not to say anything. I've seen it happen before and and honestly, I'm disgusted right now.
Um, if I can jump in.
Really hurts my feelings. Um, and I can see that it's it's affected the members of the Water Conservancy Board. I've heard people that have been talking about quitting because of this and the way that this was done.
So if I can jump in, I'd like to back this up just a little bit. I know Mr. McClure was in his retirement phase and I had personal conversations about wanting more time with his grandchildren and some things. And I know he had a vacation plan. And I know right now he is back east and he's getting that time that he was looking forward to. So in the midst of all these changes, the Water Conservancy Board being separate from the county commissioners in the design was moving forward and you had a regular scheduled meeting for tonight. How were you guys going to handle this meeting tonight?
We 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 weren't going to have it. I pushed this meeting because I can't guarantee we'll have a quorum after tonight. Uh, I have Scott Andrews resignation letter he sent to me, which I haven't accepted. Um, he's with Andrews Farms. I don't know if you know who he is and.
Um, okay, so that answers that question on administration.
I think we were kind of planning skipping this month because Dave was gone.
Yeah.
Uh, and picking up next month.
Okay.
I'm just afraid that after tonight and whatever discussion happens tonight, that we may not have a voting quorum um available from now on until.
Well, and you and I did have a conversation a few days ago and um I tried to explain that um it wasn't any intent to purge the board or any other thing that was in that conversation. Um, we are in a reorganization phase and right now with Water Conservancy Board, just to learn about the board. Mr. McClure had everything in his head.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything. Very, very big, a lot of everything. And because of the design of the Water Conservancy Board and a little bit of a disconnect from the county, it's even harder to find the information, to find the accounting, to find the bookwork, to find how did this board function, what was it doing? And what is its look for the future? What's our best way to serve the people and serve that board? How do we move forward? Um, and then whatever differences we discuss, to me, process is the most important thing first. Make sure it keeps functioning. Um, and that's, that's why I asked the auditor to sit in because there's some questions in my mind since I couldn't just open a drawer and go through things and say, oh, well, this is what we do. Um. I understand that money transfers. So that's the first place I went was to our auditor to say, what does this look like? How is it functioning? So she's getting up to speed too and maybe has questions.
Right. I don't, I mean, I think I've been with the board more or less fifteen years. Um, still learning every day. Besides the fact that ecology changed the rules constantly.
Yeah.
Uh, and it just takes so much time to learn. And and this isn't a board like most boards where you come in once a month. You sit down, you take roll call. Um, you vote on a couple of items, tell some jokes and go home for a month. This is, I mean, you're hands on. You gotta go out in the field. You gotta inspect this stuff. Um, you know, we did Condon Dam when that was removed. We had point of withdrawal changes that were clear down a cliff uh that had to be. And of course, that all has to be coordinated with contractors and all this this stuff around that has to be figured out, set up. So you never have a quorum on site. So you can only have two commissioners at one time. So all that has to be scheduled in with contractors and farmers and whoever you're. So you can only have two commissioners at one time, so all that has to be scheduled in with contractors and farmers and whoever you're. Dealing with, it's not a, it's not a just a slam dunk thing, takes some minutes, go home. So I I I really, I know you guys think you thought about this, but I don't think you. You you had enough information to make a rational decision. My opinion.
Um, and in your title to your opinion, um, I can't unfortunately go into the rationale of my opinion. Um, but uh, all I can say is that, yes, I agree, it's an important board. Uh, it's one of the most important boards. Uh, but from this point, we have to see how we move forward. Uh, and I don't see moving forward as going back. So.
If in the interim, if we don't have a voting quorum. Then anybody with a water right change goes to Yakima and slaps it down behind six thousand other applications up there.
Well, you you have an opening on that board already, why are we not working to fill that?
It's hard to get.
I was just talking about that for our other board.
It's hard to get people to commit, especially for this one with the uh education you gotta take before you can ever.
I would think the the people with a financial interest, the water right holders would be far more interested in keeping their rights.
There's rules, you can't have all water right.
Some have to be and some not.
Right, like me, I I don't have a water right, so you gotta have somebody without a water right, at least one, I don't remember.
Well, uh, you have one Andrews with a water right and one Andrews without, are they related or different families, do you know?
I think they're uncle and nephew, maybe.
Different families.
Yeah.
Not no relationship at all?
That, I mean, it's all on the same tree, but.
Right, that's all.
I don't, I don't know, I th- I thought they were like nephew and uncle, I don't know. What they're exactly.
So you have one, two, three water right holders and two non-water right holders. Who is the guy that you said is retiring? Is he a holder or non-holder?
He's a holder.
At your meeting this evening, um, is there anything really crucial that you have to get done? It was set back because Dave was going to be gone, and even though this decision came forward and you decided to push the meeting. Out of fear that you might not have a quorum. If you move through the meeting this night, tonight, and not have to make crucial decisions with the idea Mr. McClure will be back. And we'll keep moving forward where we're going uh to make decisions.
We're set up for tonight.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll attend tonight, I'll come in and answer questions.
It's uh.
So you're set up to move forward tonight and get the things on your agenda which are posted on the door out there.
Right.
Uh, done and handled tonight with no Mr. McClure around.
Yeah, uh, it looks like Dr. Olson from the Benton County Board. Is gonna bring an application tonight, that's what we wanted to get taken care of because.
And then you said technically you meet once a year, so.
No.
How often do you meet? I mean, how cram for time are we in in figuring out who's your? I guess if you need an outside secretary and it's not one of your existing people. Um, and I think that's what you're asking for is an outside secretary to control uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anyone that currently on the board that has the time or the expertise to do what Dave.
And they don't meet once a year, sir.
Well, that's why, that's what he said, but as. You you do meet monthly?
Yeah, well, we meet ever since we used to, ever since the COVID thing. You know, we kind of got away, we had, I forget how many, twelve or fifteen applications in January. Of twenty twenty because ecology was changing the application form.
For nowadays, do you meet every other month?
Well, we we meet when necessary, we've got.
Right, but how long is that average?
Well, it all depends on when an application comes in.
Just trying to get an idea, I'm not holding.
Yeah, we uh, I'm trying to remember the the, it says on the agenda what the minutes were, I think, May or June.
And it's not a simple secretary position.
It was May.
This is one of the probably the most highly specialized positions that you can imagine. It's, you know, what we contract out to Aspect or um probably a a junior executive. At two hundred and seventy dollars an hour is the expertise that's required to do that job.
I wouldn't want it at any price, because all you're gonna do is end up making a mistake. Like me. It's uh, anyway, I I just, you know, I drove up here just to talk to you guys and let you know that. You know, these these decisions are really important and uh, I, I mean, if someone would have called me, I could have gave some input. Uh, before this decision and would have been more than happy to come up and meet and do whatever, but. You know, everybody's, everybody on the board that has found out about this is very unhappy.
I can understand that, but again, they don't know what I know, so, and I can't tell them what I know, so. I I have to, I have to make decisions that are on the best interest of the county and the county's budget. And. Sometimes change is differ- difficult, but uh, yes.
And I can't tell you because I don't know.
I would think that all the board members should know what's going on. But uh, I I'm I'm just, I'm trying to, I have no interest in vested interest. In the Water Conservancy Board as far as personal water rights or any of that stuff, I do it as a public service. I did it for fifteen years with Dellsport Water. As a public service, I. So, you know, when it, when doing a public service becomes more of a headache than a benefit. Maybe it's time for everybody to back out.
I have the same thoughts sometimes.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure you do, I'll match my paycheck from the Conservancy Board against yours.
They're probably not that big a difference.
But anyway.
Yes, thank you, sir, and.
Thanks for your time. We'll see you at the meeting.
Uh, question, um, before he walks away, um. As I understand it, I've been told, you can sit down, there's, this is gonna tie it all together. Um, I've been told that the um office is now locked, Mr. McClure's old office. Um, and so I guess the question would be, is is the Water Conservancy Board is in essence uh its own organization? It does the finances a little differently, they actually accept cash, they have a a checking account. Um, in order if their Mr. Olson is bringing uh an application tonight, he has to be bringing money uh to go with that. Which means they need access to that checking or that deposit slip and account that I would expect is in the office somewhere. Who is going to be getting this, who's gonna be setting this up? Um, what are, what is the plan of the board now that we're making these radical changes?
Um.
I I'm gonna. Keep my gavel behind its scenes, but ask my seatmate to quit being dramatic with radical changes and. So.
I I think I've got the deposit covered. Um, if I can find the bank, they keep changing the names over here, so.
If there is something that needs to come out of that office.
Well, it has to be deposited, that check has to be deposited by um. The uh auditor's rules within twenty-four hours.
Right, so if there's something you need out of that office, you need to um let us know. Um, and we will um make it available, um, you know, checkbook or whatever you need in there.
I'm gonna assume I can walk into the bank, because I'm signatory on the account.
Yeah, without a deposit slip.
Right.
Unless you're not cashing the check, they usually.
Right, and like I say, I gotta find the bank, I'm not sure.
But it also needs to be entered into the check register and everything else, and so.
But I don't have, I don't have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to make sure you have access to those documents and that information. Uh, there's a process and we get audited on that every year. And it's a long process, so I want to make ensure that that process is followed.
Have you come across that check register by chance?
No, and the filing cabinet that is uh was three drawers high is not in that room. Um, it's not in the storage room in the hallway.
There's missing filing.
There is no accounting on.
I think that's the. Cabinet, and he took it home. I think.
Interesting, so maybe he has the checkbook.
Yeah, I I I probably. I don't know.
Yeah, well, that would be a good question for the person that owned the checkbook is where the checkbook is.
Yeah.
Uh, and then if it's in our control, let us know.
Right, I don't, I don't know.
Might answer your question. First I've heard about any of this. Um, I'm still trying to understand why the door is locked and what's going on. I mean, there's a lot of statements around here, I'd have information that you don't have or.
I I can, I think I can simply say it without causing any trouble.
I was gonna say, I'd be careful though.
I mean, if if there's an investigation or something, I mean, this is usually something of an investigative nature or something when you start speaking like this.
Well, I think we we said two or three times in the discussions with Mr. McClure about how crucial it was to preserve paperwork. Because he was so intelligent, had so many things that he worked on in his head and had stacks and stacks of paperwork. And we wanted a list of projects and things before he left, uh, so we could continue on. So I think preservation of documents is a very important issue.
Are you, so are you making the accusation that? I'm trying to figure out what's going on.
In executive session.
That's what I'm asking, is this, is there an investigation, is this something we can do in executive session?
We're saying, so stop using the word.
That's my point is, let's be a little more respectful of your seatmates without throwing around names and accusations that are uncalled for.
Or you're starting rumors and innuendos by your statements right now, Jake.
Which is why every time you wanna enter and debate now, just so you know, why I won't debate back. I'm not gonna debate anymore, I'm just gonna state my point, and then you can throw whatever grenade you want this direction, I'm not gonna do that anymore. Um, so just so you know, when you only get one side of a debate, that's why. Um, for your case about talking about this in executive session, I do not believe, I think you're gonna have to ask for a legal opinion on that if you had to have it.
Okay.
Because I do not believe unless there is pending or threatened litigation. This is not gonna qualify because even still, we can't get in, we can't go in for disciplinary actions of a public employee. Because they're not a public employee, um, so I don't know where this qualifies.
Yes, I don't know what qualifies for.
I I guess maybe it feels like I'm being a little accusatory because it seems like you two understand what the heck's going on here. And we've never had any conversation and I'm completely lost as to what's going on.
I think, I think being a new commissioner, I have a little lack of process on how you handle certain situations, and I'm being very careful. I I don't wanna cross the line tomorrow where I don't belong, so I'm being very careful.
That's me, I'm not going to prison for somebody else, so.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, see that went off the rails quite quickly, didn't it?
I'll, I'll try to send a couple messages and find out where that checkbook is if I can.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because you need that and all the rest of the stuff for tonight's meeting. Um, did, were you able to build a uh the budget document? Uh, or anything, you know, how we always have the reimbursements and all that that goes through?
Everybody's coming from, just on their own goodwill tonight.
All right.
Well, we'll, we'll search it out later. I'm the poorest one of the groups. Everybody else pretty well off, they can afford some gas. Thank you.
Heather, do you happen to have any questions or you're just? Auditing?
Not, not specifically, I.
Okay.
My office is happy to help.
Yeah. And maybe that's something we could talk about because I have a lack of process, and we are invested because we did do the. They're calling it a grant, but there is an investment at the county level. Um, without the documents, I don't know on file if we have a resolution for that, I don't know if we have a contract on file anywhere. Uh, for payment to the Water Conservancy Board for uh. Reimbursement for Mr. McClure for his time being administrator, treasurer, secretary. But is there a paper trail anywhere to see those original contracts so we can move forward? Okay.
Yes, there was, there was a contract agreement, I remember seeing that said contract agreement.
Right, but I would question again that if that contract expired because he was acting in a volunteer status and wasn't billing the county. And then we were gonna go back now and retroactively pay him for something he never asked for, I think we should get legal counsel on.
I just, I'm asking process questions, where where did we come from and where are we going?
Yeah, I asked for the contract um earlier and was told it was expired, so I'm gonna have to do some digging and see if I can even find the old one. Um, to get an idea on what was even in the contract, what is the scope of? Yeah, uh, or something. Yeah, I'm just kind of looking to see what the scope of work in the contract was, um, you know, I'm sure it's just not, you know, take minutes. It's just what what is all in there, uh, but this comes down to. Yeah, I don't wanna go there either. And no, I I don't think you're getting it legally under executive, it would have to be open in public if you wanted to discuss.
Okay.
Which I would advise against it.
And I appreciate you coming over, Heather, and I think I'm on a learning quest still, and I'll probably reach out. And see if you can clarify more things for me.
Heather, just to be clear, nothing with the Water Conservancy Board went through the auditor's office, correct? Because they they did it all on their own, it was cash accounting, that's how it all. And they were not eligible, right, to do so?
Don't know necessarily the eligibility. I have been, I had a discussion with the former treasurer, the Water Conservancy Board, to tell him that he had asked previous auditor. If they would run the books through the auditor's office and handle the payables.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to make you come forward to a microphone, Greg, you're right on, we can't hear you online. You reminded me of that and I just remembered it.
I had a discussion with a former treasurer from the Water Conservancy Board who said he had previously asked. An auditor to run their payables through our office and then was told no. I don't know the the reasoning behind the no. In order to run payables through our office, the treasurer would also have to act as the treasurer. So that that may be some of it, it's probably a discussion for the finance committee as to whether or not that's something that. The county wants to take on, it would require a little more research and probably a legal opinion as to whether or not they're standing to do that.
Okay, I did, thank you.
Yeah, I think we need a, an education. Um, on the process of this board, and it kind of would have been nice to have that education over the last two and a half years, but we're gonna be learning as we go.
It it also strikes me that there may be some confusion between. County designation and conservancy designations.
Elaborate.
The conservancy can hire employees.
Correct.
The county appoints the conservancy board.
Correct. We had an appointment on the conservancy board, we removed that appointment. If the conservancy board wants to hire someone, they can do so.
Yes.
That's why I was asking for clarification before, because you said any contracts as well, and so it sounded like you were canceling the contract.
Contract the county has, I can't cancel the contract. Unless it's signed off by the county. Which I haven't seen country. And I didn't see con- say contracts when I made my motion, it was removal, and I can read the exact wording for you. I know people like to put words in my mouth, but um, actually I can't, because I I deleted it from my draft. It was removed from all boards that the county commissioners have jurisdiction over was the way the motion was read. Didn't have anything to do with contracts. Um, without any further questions for our final elected official in front of us here.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for attending. Alrighty. So we're back on to FSEC public hearing. It was my opinion and I will just go forth and make a motion right now. That we move forward withholding the. Uh, public hearing on the alert emergency land use decision that this county has already made. Uh, to deem solar inadequate inside the moratorium boundaries. Uh, we already made all that. We now just have told the public hearing. Um, that public hearing. Yes, has to be done within six months. I'm making a really long motion. Why? Sorry. Um, it's my motion. To have that public hearing on August first. Uh, both at the one thirty PM time and then again in the evening. Um, knowing that we also have the title twelve standard boards at the same time, so we might wanna give a little extra room. Um, and then that is my motion.
And I will second that emotion. The motion.
Uh, that you wanna second that most eloquently worded motion?
I'm not gonna try to repeat.
Yeah, I wouldn't try to repeat it. Uh, okay, we have motion to second to move the. Um, emergency zoning restriction hearing to August first. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of moving the public hearing from August eighth to August first, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Say nay, since our.
Okay.
Won't be there.
Motion passes on a two to one vote. Uh, what else we got? Board pending. Good of the order. IT was on David. Um, I have nothing approved.
I, nothing.
Um, I do wanna, uh, write that one legal request. Questioning the legal. Advice given. Um, already essentially. Which is weird, but. On, on the.
Sorry, I missed that one.
So. The Thompson Road Appeal. The quote under click attack county building code, but it offered the violation of this time was in the essence, end quote. That was a legal bro. That was a. A quote from our legal department. Um, in response to jurors and they also circle compliance office telling him to schedule hearing. I have a question on that and what is the violation? So I'm gonna send a. Yeah, because I think. I, I think George has asked multiple times. Is there any violation here? And his answer is always that no, so.
So what's the appeal for?
Kind of where I'm coming from the whole time. Um, not that I wanna shortcut the experience at all, but. Um, somebody needs to point out the violation and I'm fine. Um, so anyway, I will send a legal on that. Other than that. Um, I might send one more. Because the way I take it is under RCW thirty-six dot twenty-seven dot oh two oh. Friend one, the board of county commissioners are the decision makers in litigation involving the county. Um, that's why I've always understood it. Is that not the way you've always understood it? So I guess my question is. I believe it should be the board of county commissioners who are the decision makers in litigation beings. It's whether they wanna appeal something, whether they wanna post to stay. Whether they want to negotiate a settlement. Uh, on other issues we currently have. Um, and, um, I guess I'd say my first step is getting a legal opinion to that question, but. Um, that question might actually be passed farther up the ladder for a legal opinion.
What do you mean further up the ladder?
Chain of command. Um, so those are the two legal opinions I plan on doing.
Um, where's further up the ladder than the chain of command? I apologize.
Get you a big stick.
Uh, we just need to hold the things like over here because I wanna still be.
Well, that's, that's the thing. So I stick up here and he can't. So it's, we're not doing it to hurt you. We're doing it to be, try to be respectful to each other. And in trying to be respectful to each other, we're not being respectful to you. So I get where you're coming from, just kinda try to work with this a little bit.
And as it's been told, this is, the meetings are a meeting between the board and having the conversation here is, is important. I lost my train of thought.
Agreed.
Where is? Up the chain of command? What do you mean up the chain of command? If, if we're sending a PA opinion request, well, how do you go above that?
Good term not entering. I'm sorry. Good term not entering in debate.
Well, it's not debate. It's a simple question. If you're making a statement, I'm trying to understand what you're so working communicate. So I can understand where you're going with this. I mean, if you don't wanna debate, is, I mean, that's kinda what we do. It's our jobs.
I disagree. I think our job is to give our opinion, share our opinion with the general public. Um, and not necessarily enter into debate. Um, when that debate turns personal. Um, and, uh. Derogatory and insightful. And, um, accusatory. Um, to defend our position. We're gonna attack somebody else's position. I don't agree with that being a proper respectful debate. Uh, and so I will no longer be pertaining and per partaking in them.
Can you explain how asking the question, what up further the chain of command creates the question of accusatory, defamatory? Or any of those other things? I'm just trying to understand where you're going with this so that hopefully I can agree with you in the direction that you're, you're seeking to go.
And I. If, in my opinion, I think you should end your conversation because. Uh, Jake's looking for answers and you're formulating your own. Personal views as a commissioner right now. And this is going to be a debate that never ends or doesn't end well. So we should just stop here. Uh, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Christopher has his right to his elected position to move forward with things. Um, and search those out and look for those as well as you do at times. And so. Uh, pressing this point right now is kind of fruitless. I think we should just leave it as is for today. Unless he's coming to ask us for something. I, I have nothing to press him on, uh, with his quest.
So I guess with that, uh, and our past precedents. Um, if you would like to send a PA opinion request, I will always be supportive of that is what I would say. It just, it feels like there's a lot of things that I don't know about what's kinda going on. Or like when you get your PA opinion request back, do we see it? Uh, without having a conversation about it.
That, that's a very good point and I, I think this board, and I don't know if it wants to take the time to do so today. Um, I would like to see this board make an official policy. Official policy. I don't know how we have to do such a thing, whether we need to write it on paper or not, that. Going forward. A member of this board types up the opinion request. Uh, gives it to staff to put on the document the prosecutor chooses us to put it on. So it isn't the staff writing out the opinion request. It's this board. And then when any opinion request is given to the prosecutor. It can be up to this board whether that question is shared with everybody. Uh, because technically it's this board getting legal advice, not individual commissioners. So I would say every question asked should be shared with the other commissioners. And then when legal responds in, in policy, that all responses have to be in writing. Uh, just like when asked by RCW thirty-six twenty-seven oh two oh. Uh, to present that document in writing when asked. Uh, that we make sure that all things are in writing, so there's no hearsay coming through staff on what legal said. We can all read it to ourselves and it's all distributed to all three commissioners. So all three commissioners are in the loop. I feel. Kinda bad to be honest and kinda not so that you feel like you're out of the loop because I was out of the loop for two years. Uh, and I feel like pretty much nobody cared because I was out of the loop. Uh, and part of that out of the loop. Um, might have something to do. Um, with why we find ourselves in the positions we find ourselves in today. So.
And so coming in, I agree. I, that for me works really well. Because coming in, I wanted strategic planning because I saw the gaps. And it's like, wow, I've never worked this way where you have to work together as a board, but you're not. And so how do we define all of this? Where is everyone's lane? But yet how do we merge as a board? And how do we share that information is really hard to do. But everybody deserves their right to ask our prosecutor for his assistant. And as that comes back, if we share it with each other, we know. The other ones looking or thinking, so we start formulating our thoughts. And then when he comes back with his opinion. We can have that board discussion and that board share then about maybe. Lori was off base totally that day and so that has to go away and there's no reason the board should discuss it any longer. Or maybe Lori has a valid point and we should be considering it moving forward. A lot of times we. Grind things up forever and ever and ever before we really know if we can even do that or not.
So it's my interpretation by reading the RCW that in order to ask for a legal interpretation by the stickler in the letter of the law. It either has to come from the board. In other words, the majority of the board or, or the board chair. Um, so the board chair on any year can ask for opinions individually without support. Um, but. A non-chair has to actually have a second vote. I, I think that's ridiculous, which is why I've always said if either my seatmates ever want an illegal opinion on me, yes. On any issue related to county business. Um, but just for the record, I believe it has to be a second vote, but if we make it a standing policy. Then there's no chance of getting denied and or potentially not getting your question. Uh, but I do wanna take staff out of it because I don't want staff getting. Treated in the middle of any kind of way, in the middle of any kind of. Conflict. Uh, it's not their fault. It's not their problem. They're just trying to do their job. They shouldn't have to play he said, she said. Or play the telephone game and pass on what somebody said. Um, I, let's put it all in writing. Let's put the question in writing. Let's put the answer in writing. Let's let all the commissioners know the question. Let's let all the commissioners know the answer. That way they can deem themselves roles. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Do the public or, or the, the PR opinion request. Um, at the end of last meeting, it, Commissioner Zoller said that she was going to do. Some homework on, um. Whether or not we can go forward or, or go do homework with going forward to Superior Court Judge. Um, do you have an update for us?
I do not.
Okay.
I got involved with Dallas Port Community Council and a few other issues and my time was gone.
Goes by real fast.
Yes, it does.
That happens.
It does.
Um, I have to honestly admit, my time was gone this week, not so much with work, but I had to put away seventeen tons of hay my once a year. That I guess you might call it my vacation for three days if you wanna count putting seventeen tons of hay of vacation. Um, but, um, yeah, that was four hours of my day for the last five days. So, yeah, I will look forward to updates on that and we all have our homework going forward. Um, any other board pending, any other staff issues that we need to address? Um, can we have radio on Thursday? Thought I heard something that we had radio, but I don't see it in our minutes.
I think it's a week out.
Yeah, I don't see it on the calendar anyway.
Like the twentieth, maybe?
Yeah, it's a week out. Okay. No, I just got an email today that was talking about, we all probably did. There was a question that the radio, the person wanted the radio to ask us. So I was just kinda thinking it was this week. Um, but it's not, it's next week. So, no, good enough. Uh, any other pertinent, anything before the board before we recess? For our workshop on Thursday. It's gonna be a short workshop. We started ten and end at noon. Okay, no. Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, uh, noting that we will be back in session Thursday, July thirteenth at ten AM for scheduled work.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn until Thursday morning. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of journey, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone on internet land for watching our fun-filled broadcast today.